Okay, well, good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for our May meeting of the Board of Trustees of St. Petersburg College. We appreciate the flexibility of our team and the board to, again, join us virtually. And hopefully, we can start seeing each other in person soon. With that, Trustee Gibbons is going to lead us in our invocation, and I'll turn it over to you.
Goodbye, heads. Our most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to see another day. Thank you for giving us the wisdom to move this college forward in a positive way. Continue to bless all of its leadership, all of the people who work for the college, and especially the Board trustees, Lord. Give us what we need to make sure that we sufficiently support each and every consumer, customer, and student of the college. Lord, bless our country in these times that we're going through. Continue to bless our leadership at the federal, state, and local levels. And, Lord, most importantly, watch over each and every one of us in your own special way. Lord, thank you for your keep, keep us, guiding us in the right path. And Father God, please bless our county and our local leaders so that they may make the right decisions to keep us safe and out of harm's way. In Jesus' name, in whom I pray, and in whose name you may pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. We are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you'd please rise. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance
to the flag of the United States
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, with that, we have two retirements, and I know Dr. Williams has some special things to say about our retirees, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. The first one is Irma Finley. Irma served as a sign language interpreter at the Clearwater Campus. She's retiring after 28 and a half years of service at the college. She is well-loved by students, staff, and faculty. She especially enjoyed mentoring, interpreting students, and sharing her talents and experiences with them. Today, we honor and recognize the service of Irma Finley. Thank you, Irma. The second one is Debbie Proctor. Debbie served as a manager of Student Support Information, retiring after 30 years with the college in various roles. She regularly provides end-user training, troubleshoots issues, conducts systems tests, queries data from the system, and interacts with both technical and functional users of the system. It is her thoughtfulness and her warm, caring ways that have served as a foundation for a remarkable career. Thank you, Debbie Proctor. We recognize these outstanding SPC retirees.
Thank you so much, Dr. Williams, and thank you, Ms. Finley and Ms. Proctor, for your service to the college. We greatly appreciate it. SPC Spotlight, Dr. Williams?
Yes, this is our opportunity to brag about the good work that's been done even during this pandemic situation. Wayne Kruger in financial aid helped write an article at US News Report on getting emergency financial aid during COVID-19. Rod Davis partnered with Advent Health to put together testing for COVID at the Tarpon Springs campus. Katie Schultz, our grants leader, facilitated a CARES Act webinar with the Council for Advancement and Support case organization. Media coverage, we've been on Bay News Nine like three times, Channel 10 twice, Tampa Bay Times. They've covered so many things that we have done from our virtual nursing program, our environmental student club, Helping the Girls, Inc. The Palladium was named Best Community Performing Arts Center by Tampa Bay Magazine. And we've had an op-ed in The Times, as well as one in diverse magazines, a national magazine. We've also held industry clusters. We have three more to do. The Florida Chamber Economist, Jerry Parrish, joined me in a conference with the State of the Economy for Pinellas County, which went very well and highly attended. We had a manufacturing cluster with Bama, which is our local manufacturing organization. We learned a lot more about what we can offer as a college to support the business. We also had a great cluster called Safe Hospitality with our hospitality leaders, and that, too, was heavily attended, and I believe this Friday, we have one for IT. The last thing I want to share is we have really been improving our communications through technology. We've had three town hall meetings, which went very well. Two faculty listening posts, several surveys, emails, and videos to keep individuals abreast of what's going on at the college, as well as hearing the voices of our employees and our students regarding their experiences during this unprecedented time. And those would be my reports for SPC Spotlight.
Thank you so much, Trustee or Dr. Williams. We appreciate it. And now with general comments, and I'll defer because there's so many. I know Dr. Williams is going to give some of the updates that I would have given, but I just want to especially thank our professors, and I also want to thank our online social media team. This has been a really important time to stay connected to both the community and our students, and especially with graduation in-person ceremonies being canceled. Our social media team has done a really great job capturing the spirit of St. Petersburg College, what our community is doing for one another, and really celebrating each of our students and our divisions. And so just wanted to say thank you to them especially, along with everybody else who's doing so many big things during this time. So with that, I'll turn it over to the board. I'll go in order of my Brady Bunch cubes here, so Trustee Gibbons, you're the first one up.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have nothing.
Thank you. Mr. Stone Cypher?
You know, I just want to echo what you said, Ms. Cole. It's, it's been pretty amazing to watch not only the communication with us, but also at the college with the students, with our teachers and staff. I, for one, I know I'm speaking for each of the trustees missed graduation, and the environment that that creates, and the look on our students' faces, and the faculty and professional faces of everyone who's so excited for that day and what happens, and what that means in the lives of our students. But I'm grateful that we have a staff that's so committed to communicating and making sure that we celebrate different ways, things that we're missing in person, and I just say thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Trustee Kidwell?
Thank you to the college leadership for all the leadership during this rough time. Unprecedented. I echo what Nathan said. It's often hard to follow what Nathan says, so I'll stop now.
Very good. Trustee Bello?
Good morning. Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself, and sorry, my computer decided it did not want to wake up this morning and was not operating. No, I just wanted to highlight something. We partnered with the college last Thursday at the new normal Zoom, that we had about 100 people in attendance at. That was all about supporting the furloughed and laid-off workforce that exists in our community. And Mike Ramsey did an amazing job, the dean of the Workforce Institute, and we got a lot of really positive feedback and really made an impact on the community. There was a lot of information shared that people weren't, no existent, didn't know the resources that were out there, and so I was proud to partner with SPC on that.
Great. Thank you so much. I know that I've been talking to Dr. Williams, and she regularly, on a almost daily basis, tells me about who in the college is meeting with various community employers especially. And I think that our ability and the opportunity to really showcase how we can be responsive to employers, get people retooled, retrained, and integrated back into the workforce is shining through, and will continue to do so. So thank you all. Dr. Williams, any other comments?
I would have to echo the entire board on the work of the employees who just refuse to leave a student behind and each other. They have supported each other, and so I am just proud of them. My hat goes out. I tip my hat to them because they have just done a great job. I believe that creativity and ingenuity is at an all-time high at SPC right now. Our team is learning a lot, but also making a lot of changes and improvements in this new environment. I've shared with them that in the past, SPC was one of the number-one online learning institutions, but now the other 27 are doing the exact same thing. So the competition's going to be steeper, and it's going to be different, and we're going to need to be more nimble than, than we have before. And I also want to highlight Vice Chair Bello, who's very involved in the ISPS Board. And I had attended the meeting this last week, and I hadn't been to one in a couple of months, and it is a totally different board. And so thank you for your leadership and the movement of that group right along the lines of where we need to go. And so we're moving forward. I'm very proud of that. And you'll hear a lot more about what's happening at the college as we go through the next few presentations, so I'll stop there.
Thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment cards, or has anybody raised their hand to speak online?
Chair Cole, we have no public comments.
Very good. Thank you. I know that this is an awkward format for the general public to come in, so I'd appreciate it. Ms. Hinding, if somebody does raise their hand, not to get unruly or out of order, but, you know, we'll try, we'll try to accommodate as best we can. So with that included in the documents that were provided to the trustees were our meeting minutes from April 21st of 2020. Are there any comments or changes to the minutes? And if not, may I have a motion to approve?
I may as well approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. Ms. Gardner, any monthly report?
Good morning. I do not have a report this month.
Thank you. And our strategic focus, our first is our student success and academic achievement. In your packet is the most recent Strategic Plan Dashboard. As you can see, there's a significant amount of red on it, not unsurprising based on the numbers and kind of the full swap that we did the past, last month when we talked at the board. We expressed to the team that we, you know, didn't want them focusing on what could have been and feeling down about maybe not hitting some of these thresholds, but let's look realistically in today's environment, what our student achievement, success, opportunities can be. We don't, we have not taken our eye off the ball. We don't want to, but we certainly need to recognize that some of our goals may change. So Dr. Williams has provided, based on the strategic work groups, and if you'll recall, in December, each of us volunteered and raised our hand to participate in a college-wide strategic work group. The first meeting was supposed to be in March after our board meeting. That was delayed because of COVID and the change in not being able to have meetings. But we will continue to work in those five strategic plan categories. Just to recap, it's academic excellence with Trustee Gibbons, and the priority is certainly to close the achievement gap. Vice Chair Bello with Economic Mobility. And one of the primary goal that we'll be focused on would be the drive enrollment growth. The Community Engagement Work Group with Trustee Kidwell, promoting civic leadership. The Financial Vitality Work Group with Trustee Stone Cypher. The suggested priority would be to increase non-state funding streams and diversity resources. And I'm working on the employee experience and engagement priority would be to ensure employee engagement and retention through strong communication, recognition, and responsiveness. So this is a little bit of a shift from what's on your dashboard, and those are the things that were the primary, primary priorities for 2020. Looking at the forthcoming six months and looking back for about nine weeks, Dr. Williams has suggested kind of realigning some of those priorities to meet the current situation. And so this is something that we're going to work on further and come back in June with. But just to preview, we talked about realigning the budget to meet institutional priorities, improving the online learning and student success rates, enhancing the delivery of online student support services, advising tutoring, financial aid, and increasing employee support services and communication. So those are kind of the four top priorities that Dr. Williams feels like, even in the long term, we can work to achieve, and even in light of our kind of shift in realignment. So if anybody has comments about the dashboard or about the work, or would like to give some input on that now, totally welcome that. Otherwise, I know Dr. Williams will be reaching out to each of us over the course of the next few weeks in, in working through these priorities and kind of gathering that information so we can look at it more fully in June. Any comments on that? Thank you, Dr. Williams, for putting that together. With that, we'll turn it over to Ms. Hunt in Budget and Finance, and we do have a presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair Cole, Board members, and Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'd like to, good morning. I'd like to share with you where we are in the budget development planning piece. Usually, at this point of the year, we would be closer to some finalized numbers with everything that is going on. I wanted to just share with you where we were and what uncertainties we're facing in the development of the budget. And so first, taking a look at our state created revenue. So here, this is actually unapproved. So as of now, the House Bill 5001, or the General Appropriations Act, known as GAA, has not been approved by the governor. This is the latest version that is with colleges. There has not, the state has not given us any extension on submitting a budget for June 30th. So they've, their expectation is for us to develop a budget based on this latest version of the GAA and submit the budget to them by the due date. What they are asking is that as the amounts change, or if the government changes or retails any of the amounts, that they will notify us, and then we, at that point, would have to do a budget amendment and submit an updated budget report to them. So here is just a side-by-side comparison of what we have in the current year based on what's in the GAA now. And so the first four line items shows the general revenue portion, and I have it split out because the first line is our general operating funds, but the next three lines are for special programs. So looking at the first line, there's a $1 million decrease in this line item, and you'll see below the lottery line item, they've actually shifted that to the lottery. We all know that the lottery funding comes in, it starts in February, so this does impact cash flow. The next three line items that are under the general revenue are our OMP program, which is right now a decrease of about $55,000. We have $725,000 in for the nursing simulation, and then $2 million for the collegiate high school. Please note for the collegiate high school funding, this does not impact the operating fund, so we would not see this in our Fund One budget. The two items, the two plus two and the student success incentive fund and the Work Florida, this was a year ago considered the line item for performance funding. We have here a reduction of about $9,000 in the two plus two, but an increase of $43,000 in the Work Florida Student Success Initiative. The next line item is our Student Success Initiative. In the GAA, this line item totals about $22.9 million, and it has not officially been allocated to the colleges in the GAA or within the state. This is affectionately called the tier-based model funding, which I show at the bottom. We are, this funding is grouped into seven tiers based on enrollment. St. Pete College is in the sixth tier, and the funding is allocated based off of four components: base student allocation, compression, enrollment growth, and workforce programs. In the, in the act, the Department of Education has stated they have the ability to reallocate the funds proportionately based on student enrollment during the 2021 fiscal year. I don't know if there'll be any changes to that, but this means that based on the enrollment, the $678,000 could be redistributed to another college. The next line item is our industry certifications. There was no change in the GAA. $14 million was allocated college-wide. We budgeted $700,000 this year and expect about the same in the upcoming fiscal year. So looking at the year-over-year change, that's $2.7 million. But I wanted to also show some of the other differences that happened or that were passed in the bill this year, or in a bill this year. And so one of that is the FRS. Could you go back to the screen before, please? Is the FRS increase, so it was passed at a 1.5% increase to our Florida retirement systems rates, and that equates to about $1.1 million increase in expenses. If we receive the tier model funding, the $678,000, the net difference year-over-year is $2.2 million total, but the net difference for our operating fund would be $244,000. So next, on the next slide, I wanted to go through the revenue factors that are kind of guiding our development and some of the uncertainties we have there. So for the first section is the unapproved state appropriation, which we went through. That's about 50% of our operating budget revenue. Next is our student tuition and fees. We are expected to be impacted by the coronavirus pandemic. Within the state colleges, they're expecting declines anywhere from 10% to 30%. Nationally, we've seen some expectations for other colleges and universities even looking up to 50%. Also hearing that for 2020, expecting students to exercise what they call the gap year and to not return until 2021. So we've been planning the budget based on enrollment decline of about 20% in the fall, 15% in the spring, and 5% in the summer, hoping that in 2021, we'll see some change as students start to return more to the college or universities. This was a medium that we looked at that we thought we could best prepare for in estimating, and that amount is about $10.7 million. Of course, the college is doing everything it can to counter that decline. Our marketing department, enrollment management, have been working diligently on marketing strategies, also looking, doing Zooms with webinars for high school students, social media, marketing strategies, trying to mitigate that enrollment decline. And then the last section is our auxiliary funds and some of our other funds. So with enrollment decline, it also means that we will have less bookstore sales, which affects our bookstore commissions. We've also, due to the social distancing and the shutdowns, have seen a reduction in our facility rentals, food services, interest and dividend rates decreasing, and also the patterns show that in recessions, people tend to hold on to their money, which means lower donations to the foundation. With all that, we are still trying to create a sustainable expense budget. And so when we go to the next slide, we'll look at some of the expense factors that are weighing into that area. First, looking at our, our current expense. We know overall, as even though revenue sources are changing and possibly declining, costs of materials and services are continuing to, to increase. And so we're trying to look at all those line items to see where we can find cost efficiencies, looking at things like travel and supplies, and what do we really need to purchase. The other piece that falls into this category is also preparing for the unknown. We've heard that there could be return of coronavirus or for any other emergency events that take place. Next is our FRS rates, which I talked about in the first slide. That increased to 1.5%. The next line item is health insurance. This is a nationwide issue, and it continues to be a factor for the college. We have an aging workforce that results into higher claims costs. And so some of the ways to try to mitigate these expenses is we're looking at other options, such as revised plan designs, possibly joining the consortium, and also developing a multi-year plan so we can address some of the future needs that are attributed to health costs. Next is technology expense. With the move to operating remotely, also moving courses to online, it really highlights the technology expenses and what we need to strengthen that infrastructure, develop online programs, updating equipment, and just the cost of operating online. We have been reviewing our processes and structures. We are looking at applications to see how efficiencies can be made, and also, most importantly, is how can we leverage technology to create efficiencies in other areas? Lastly, is the category of personnel. We, this represents about 78% of our budget, so we most certainly have to look at our personnel structures and strategies. What the college has done so far is we put a hiring freeze on 47 positions. We've redeployed some employees to needed positions. We are currently performing an exercise to review positions and functions for furloughs. Naturally, with a decline in enrollment, organically instructional costs would decline as well. We're also looking at setting up some measures and monitoring tools for instructional and personnel costs, and then also redesigning some of our additional pay structures like cellphone allowances and stipends. So the next slide talks about the CARES funding that we have been awarded. This is federal dollars, and right now, our total reward is This is federal dollars, and right now, our total reward is thirteen point four million. In the first category, this is our student aid, which is six point four million. As of yesterday, we have awarded six thousand eight hundred and fifty-four awards to students, totaling in a little over three point three million dollars. The college really responded quickly to the aid once we received it and made sure that we immediately got the, the aid into the hands of the students. The two main reasons that students applied for the aid was housing and food. The next section is our institutional portion. This portion is to help strengthen our tech, could help strengthen our technology infrastructure and support our on-learning, online learning. This is an area where there's still quite a bit of questions. And so right now, we have not finalized a, a full plan on this particular area because we want to make sure that we, we have the parameters and the guidelines correct. Susan Gardner and I are attending a meeting on Friday, which will hopefully give us some more information on this funding. One of the examples why this is so important for us to, to get right is for the student aid. We had everything ready, and literally, a few days before surveying the students, the federal government changed some of the guidelines. And so we just want to make sure that we have the, the guidelines in place. I will say that the initial plan is to, for the CARES Act funding is, of course, to grant aids to all the needed students, reimburse any allowable COVID expenses, revenue recovery, if at all possible, and expand the remote learning platform. Then the last category is funding that not every college or university received, but it was for minorities-serving institutions. And so we were awarded six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars there. This is another one of the items that we're digging into some of the guidelines just to make sure that before developing a plan to, to use this fund, we're following compliances with, with this funding. Any questions on what I just presented? If not, I, I want to say that our next steps will continue to review all of the factors to also develop a fiscally responsible operating budget based on the best estimates that we can with the information that we know. After that, we would then be contacting you for individual meetings to discuss the budget in more detail, and then still plan to present a budget at the June board meeting for your approval.
Madam Chair, I have one question. If we have time. Thank you, Ms. Hunt. That was a great presentation, and I know there's a lot of different angles and a million different pieces to take into consideration with all this and a ton of unknowns. Are we also, and I know we're going to get more information in months to come, are we also, do we have, are we going to have like a Plan D where if, on the other side of this, we find that there are actually more students than we thought enrolling for classes, whether that's online or in person as time goes on? I guess, I guess I just want to make sure we're balancing, making needed budget decisions at the time that we need to, but not too quickly, just in case something different than what we're expecting happens.
Thank you, Trustee Stone Cypher. That's an excellent question, and Dr. Williams and I specifically discussed that. And so if enrollment, which we hope does not decline to the level that we may be expecting, there is a much better opportunity for us to come back to the board and say, hey, things are great. We propose a, a budget amendment, and we will ask for approval at that time for, for a new budget.
Great. I am speaking to a lot of people who have lost jobs, and quite a few of them are considering enrolling in college. So I'm, while I'm, it's unfortunate that they're unemployed. Who knows? We, I know this isn't going to be a typical recession, but I guess we just have to be ready for anything. So thank you.
Yes.
And Trustee Stone Cypher, if I may, Madam Chair, the, the goal is to do exactly what you're talking about, and that is to have a very good strategy for enrollment, and that's what we're trying to do, is to avoid the twenty percent decline. But we have to plan for it. It's easier to go back and say, things are better, we have this extra, let's do this, than it is to give it away and say, now we, we need to, you know, draw back and, and take it back. And so we're, we're hoping that that is exactly what occurs.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Hunt or Dr. Williams about the strategy? I, I would be remiss. I know that we talked about it last month, and Trustee Gibbons was kind enough to share some insight at that point. But certainly, the state has, has not been a huge help in this process since we don't have a signed budget yet. And we understand that the legislature will be going back to Tallahassee to look at that budget in light of this significant revenue shortfall that the state will face. So we know that you're gathering as much intel that you can and piecing that together to be able to put a plan together. I think it's important to note for the trustees, despite the fact that there's not a executed signed budget with the state for us to rely upon, the state has not eliminated the obligation for the state colleges to transmit their budgets to the state in a timely manner by June, in June, which is our normal deadline. So there are so many unknowns, but we, I think you're tackling it well and piecing together as best we can. So we appreciate that. If there are no other budget questions, I will move on to strategic planning. And Mr. Gray, I think this is, I got a preview of this yesterday, and I think the trustees are going to be thrilled to see this. So thank you so much for joining us.
Bill, are you on?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Madam Chair and board members, we do have a presentation for you this morning, and Dr. Williams will share with you the first few slides and give you some of that information, and I will follow up with her.
Thank you so much, Bill. I appreciate that. We wanted to bring an update to you regarding, you know, the road to recovery on COVID and some of the things that we have been doing and what, what we're up to. And so the first thing I wanted to share is that we're really looking at three areas. The first area is relief and response. The first thing we wanted to do was remove the pressure, relieve the pain for both our students and employees, and provide a strong response. And so we're going to talk about some of the things that we did there. The second part is the return. Bill is going to talk about that and what's happening with the Comeback Task Force, and then I'll come back and close on reimagining. So we can go to the next slide. Thank you. When we first started, we really had to look at, can we go to, thank you. We really had to look at, what do we need to do? We talked about transitioning those eighteen hundred classes or sections from on-campus to online, and we did that relatively quickly. Gave out almost four hundred by now laptops, and then we donated equipment. We've also done some more work since then, but we're not going to go through all of that. But the thing that we wanted to do, if we could go to the next slide, is keep students learning and keep employees working. That was our number-one goal. The thing that we focused the most on was how can we accommodate our students to keep them learning? How can we make sure our employees remain employed? And so with the changes that we made, we moved things forward so students can continue to learn. We graduated, I think, two thousand three hundred and sixty-six students. This May, I think we anticipated about twenty-five hundred. So not bad, considering what happened with COVID. And so they all will receive their diplomas, will have a later graduation ceremony, we hope, in July. But we have done a lot through Zoom. We've also been accommodating with our employees to be able to work from home, and those who are essential staff came to work on campus, and they rotated that back and, back and forth. If we go to the next slide, our foundation stepped up. Before we received the stimulus money, the foundation had already put things in place to help our students, to help us. You, you know that you had approved us getting help with online tutoring, and the foundation paid for that, and then with the Last Mile Scholarship. And I'm, I'm kind of reviewing this again because I want to make sure everything doesn't sound so doom and gloom, because we've done such good work, and we've made so many differences to help people continue to learn and to move forward. The next slide is the stimulus. We took that out. Okay, thank goodness. And now we're here to talk about the next two phases of where we need to go. And so Bill is going to take it from here.
Yes, thank you. After we responded to the initial implementation of the COVID-nineteen virus, we did an after-action report with our mission essential departments. And what we found with those mission essential departments' feedback was that the college really did an interesting or a great job, really, in, in communication, the teamwork, the collaboration between the various departments was great, as well as the conversion to an online model for not only teaching our classes, but as far as our employees working as well. When you look at this particular screen here, you see we have two phases that we've established to work on our comeback plan. We hope to have a plan available and ready to present to you for the first June meeting. Our task force is busily, busy working on that at the present time. They're looking at developing normal operations with a flat budget, a ten percent reduction in enrollment and state funding, the possibility of a twenty percent reduction in enrollment and state funding. So we're using those ground rules for determining our plan as, as we move forward. Phase two, the reimagining of Saint Pete College, would start in July. I think Dr. Williams will ad lib on that a little more in detail here as we move forward with the presentation. You can see we have additional information posted on our website. We're updating that on a regular basis. There's a wealth of information there that is available, not only to our employees, but our students and our community. And then over to the right, you can see the comeback plan is guided by the CDC and the, with the priorities of safety for students, faculty, and staff. The other resources that we're working with is the Pinellas County Health Department, the Pinellas County Emergency Management. Myself and the head of our security, Dan Barto, participated in a weekly phone call with Pinellas County Emergency Management, so we stay in tune with them. Obviously, the State Division of State, Division of State Colleges, and the Disaster Resilient Universities is a listserv for all colleges and universities across the country where we can share information with each other for any type of scenario that might occur. I also work closely with the area colleges. We have a weekly phone conference with the University of South Florida, Eckerd College, St. Leo University, USF Tampa as well, and, and Hillsborough Community College. So we're in communication with each other so that we have some commonality there locally. Next slide, please. As mentioned, we have a thirty-member task force, which is charged with facilitating recommendations using a phased-in approach, as we mentioned. The task force is a cross-functional team with representation from the LA administration, faculty, staff, and, and our student body. Today, we've met twice. We plan to meet again this Thursday to further develop our, our planning. Through scenario building and strategy development, the task force will address areas such as safety and wellness, teaching and learning, institutional viability, student success, employee engagement, and community engagement. And as I said, early recommendations will be presented to the president's cabinet and to the Board of Trustees sometime in June. Next slide, please. To get into a little more depth, the core pillars that we established, there were three in the area of safety, stability, and students. The, the safety was to ensure the health and well-being of our college community. In that area, we've been focusing on how do we return to campus, what systems we put in place for access control, signage, sanitation of the buildings, et cetera, et cetera. Under stability, we're looking at the economic impact on the college, minimizing the financial impact to students and employees. And then the student core pillar, our team is working very diligently putting together our academic return plan. Do we use a phased-in approach? Do we continue to have some face-to-face classes at that time when, when it becomes some normality, as well as our, our online learning? So that academic affairs group, that student group, is working very hard in, in putting that piece together. We're also addressing the tutoring phase, as well as how we would handle and work with our, our international students. So next slide. Next slide. And I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Williams here to give you some information on the reimagine.
So the task force right now is focusing on bringing us back to campus in phases. We may not come back, flip the switch, and a hundred percent everybody's on campus. So it may be thirty percent, then we do a little bit more, and we do a little bit more. We're looking at all of those programs that require collaboration, such as the Police Academy and the Fire Academy and Nursing and Dental Hygiene. And there are things we're going to have to do differently. Our classrooms are going to have to be expanded. We're going to have to look at, Class A was in this building. Now it's going to be over here where there's more, more space to span out. We're going to have to look at offering classes where some of the students come to class, some are on, online at home, and vice versa. And so there's a lot of considerations that we need to have in place. But we do need to reimagine Saint Petersburg College. What it's going to look like in the future, how we're going to impact our community, and what we are going to be known for. We know that COVID has changed everything, how people work, learn, and play. And so instead of waiting for things to happen to us, we want to make sure that we're a part of the decision and that we create that. And so if you recall, the trustees agreed that we would create a new three-year plan. We would work on it from the summer all the way through to December and finalize it in December. And so what we'd like to propose is that we have also a reimagining plan where we re-envision the college as a whole and not just set some priorities, but we really look at what do we want to be known for, and how will we change to meet this new way of living, this new way of learning? I'm not sure that all of K through twelve is going to go back right away. I've talked to the superintendent, and they have phases that they're working on. But some of this online learning is going to stay. It's going to remain. We're already oversubscribed in our facilities. There's so much for us to think about and look at as to what do we really want to be known for. So once the plan is in place and the board has approved the comeback plan, we will start working on our reimagining S P C and creating that new three-year plan, but with a different twist than just here are the goals. It's more of who are we and what will we want to be known for? And so we'll be working on that after the plan is approved to come back.
Thank you, Mr. Gray and Dr. Williams. Are there any?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
This is a great presentation. Two things. One is, have we looked at the impact to Dan Barto's staff and how people will enter? Since we will have people coming back to campus, how that will impact them? Are we checking temperatures? What will be the protocol for entering facilities? Because most facilities from this point on will have a entrance requirement for you to enter their facility. Second question is, we talked about the online space. We have seen over the past years that when students are online, productivity goes down in terms of completion and other things. What type of tutorials and other things are we putting in place to help facilitate the students, making sure that they can complete these courses? students, making sure that they can complete these courses online and understand everything that they're doing online? The online stuff is great when you are good at it, but when you're not good at it, it is horrible and is confusing and a bunch of other things. So all that being said, just want to make sure that we have taken those things into consideration, especially the one related to Dan Barto and his staff, security staff, and how we enter those buildings because we don't want to become a hotbed for the expansion until there is a, some type of vaccine that deals with this whole thing.
Thank you. You're right on in the task force under the safety area. They're looking at safety and security and they have representation on that committee. They've also talked about what it would look like, face masks, the sanitization part as well as security. The other group, in addition to the security, is also facilities. There's a lot of considerations that are being taken. Bill, I don't know how deep you guys have gotten on the safety committee, but I know that there's been a lot of work that Diana and her team has done for facilities and safety. All of the facilities crew, they've all been trained on the new way of cleaning and how to move forward. And then with security, we would have to work on that because, as you know, Trustee Gibbons, we could use a lot more security help at this, at this point, even before we had COVID. But all of those questions that you're asking are questions that the task force is working on. Bill, if I'm missing anything, feel free to chime in.
Dan Barto is part of the Safety and Stability Task Force or Work Group. And he's very aware of the concerns of access control, making sure we know who's coming on the campus and so on and so forth. As far as testing is concerned, we still have to develop what procedures we'll use for St. Pete College in that regard. But I do think that is a major concern with our working group and will be brought back into our final report.
Agreed. Thank you.
Any other questions? One thing, I would just be remiss if we didn't comment that the, first of all, thank you very much. We appreciate all that hard work. And who would have thought as an emergency manager in Florida, you'd end up dealing with these issues instead of just hurricanes? But understanding that hurricane season starts in a couple of weeks, not having students on campus is certainly going to help our planning for those, for that case, so we don't have to shut down in the event that there is a storm. But is there any additional planning or funding or issues that you've identified where, with these two emergencies transecting or the potential of them to transact? Or is that just a wait and see?
Each year, we meet with our marketing and public information office as far as preparing them to handle hurricane season. We have a meeting scheduled for them next week to review our hurricane planning procedures as well as our facilities team. We'll be meeting with them next week as well to go over our hurricane procedures. And as you mentioned, it will be a unique year should we have a storm during this pandemic situation. So we are doing our planning as we have in the past and will be modified somewhat because of the situation we're in. But we're moving forward with that. And of course, as you know, June 1 is the target date or the beginning date for hurricane season. So we'll be well-prepared for that. Dr. Williams?
Yes, I do want to go back before we leave Trustee Gibbons' question. I failed to answer one of his comments. He talked about student learning online and what strategies have we put into place to support students and student success? And so our success rates for online, which everyone was online at the end of this semester, was 1.2% lower than last spring. So we're doing better there. And then the group, if I recall correctly, that did better in overall success rates were African-American students, but they also, Trustee Gibbons, withdrew at a higher rate. So those who stayed did well, those who withdrew withdrew. But the other, the other piece is all of the support services we've put into place with the new online. Online live is different than the online independent. And so we're looking at both to see which process seems to be more successful. I think it works well for different people, for what they want. So we plan on having the on-campus courses as well, but the online live seems to have a different twist than the old online class for student success. So we're going to dig deeper into that and bring back some data there. The other thing that I want to share is, two weeks ago, our enrollment was down 9.9%. Last week it was seven, this week it's 2.4. So some of the things are moving in some different directions. But I believe that the faculty and the support staff have found a good, I guess, a good tune to do a song and dance when it comes to student success online. And because we're not going to be able to open 100% on campus right away, we're going to be keeping those online face-to-face courses. And then the other thing, Chair Cole, when you talk about the hurricanes, we do need to have a strong plan for online instruction during the hurricanes because the power is out. And so, and so while people may not be on campus, they may not be able to learn as much as well if the electricity is out. And so there needs to be some things in place for extending the semester or extending, you know, other opportunities for hurricanes as well. So I think you're, you're right on, on us focusing on that. So I think we're moving right along in the right direction.
Very good, thank you. Any other questions about our emergency management plan or the post-COVID or pre-hurricane? Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Good job.
Appreciate it, Mr. Gray. Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, we have a number of items on the consent agenda, a lengthy, as usual, the, over the summer personnel report and contract recommendations, as well as we heard all of the wonderful grant work that our team has been doing, the acceptance of some grants. Thank you to Trustee Kidwell and Trustee Bellows for their work with the construction team on construction services. And then we also have lab fees and another contract. With that, I, while we normally take all consent items together, I do want to disclose, I spoke to Ms. Gardner, the law firm that I work for does do work for one of the vendors on the construction list. And so I'd ask if we can pull that off consent, approve everything else, and then I'll recuse myself from the other, from the construction items. So with that, if there are no questions, I'll take a motion to amend the consent agenda or a motion to approve everything but the construction items, please.
I'll move to accept everything on the consent agenda except for item four, construction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And then with respect to the construction items, is there a motion to approve the construction contracts as stated or the construction rankings as stated in the contract, in the agenda?
I'll move to approve the construction items under the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Both Trustee Bellow and Kidwell, so take your big pick there, Ms. Turner. Are there any comments? And a vote, which I will recuse myself from, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much. Under the informational report, you'll see the direct service, support organization reports, Leepa Ratner, ISPs, the College Foundation, as well as the Palladium. We've already gotten some great highlights. The Palladium's been recognized. I would like to personally recognize Jesse and his team with the foundation. We saw a little snippet about the emergency fund that the foundation immediately raised and distributed with respect to COVID. My husband and I donated to that fund and I have to say, we were thrilled last week to receive a video from an individual student who actually spoke about her experience during this time and how she used those dollars. And so that personal touch was extremely appreciated and thank you for putting that together to Jesse and his team. I also should have said during our earlier comments that the foundation hosted a Zoom meeting with some of its donors. And Dr. Williams was able to give some information about the college. And it was really a great opportunity. It was, I know one of the trustee's goals has been to align the foundation board of directors with the college trustees. And I have to say that was an hour, hour and a half well-spent, having a discussion with various donors about their, what means something to them with the college. And for Dr. Williams to be able to talk not only about the scholarship, scholarship aspect and the students that are being served, but the overall health of the college and how we fit into the community. So thank you for putting that together. And if it's happening again, Mr. Turtle, if you can invite the other trustees, I would hope that somebody can hop on Zoom call to participate as well. It was very excellent. So with that, are there any questions about the informational reports in your packet?
There's no questions, but I will make a comment. Having not sat on a construction selection committee before and not knowing how they typically run, it ran very smoothly and was an easy process to be a part of. So I just wanted to thank whoever put that together and made it something that we could do remote and very efficiently.
Perfect.
Williams, I'll pass that on to Diana.
We'll pass it on to Diana.
Thank you both, Trustee Kidwell and Trustee Bellow for participating in that process. So there are no changes to the Board of Trustees' rules manual and no public hearing. Dr. Williams, your president's report?
I feel like I've talked a lot in this meeting. I am just focusing on what the state is going to do. I just text Trustee Gibbons to ask what he had heard about them going back in session. And he shared that he believes it's in July, which is after the board, which is after the time that we're supposed to submit our budget to the state. Some colleges are really looking at submitting a budget from last year and not this year to just be conservative in a time of the uncertainty. We don't know the answer. So if the legislators are going back in July, I'm hoping that either they're going to extend. Yes, sir.
I don't think they're going to go back at all. I think it's just going to approve the budget. The governor, as well as the speaker and the incoming speaker and the incoming president all know that there is enough federal funding and they do not have to raid the funds, that they have enough money to balance the budget based upon what's already there. So I don't think they're going to actually go back. I think they're going to take, but the governor's going to take the budget, veto some things. They're going to approve it, just like they did over the phone, approve not going back to Tallahassee because they feel like they have enough funding to do things they need to do to stay.
That's great. Trustee Gibbons, then, do you think we should follow some of the other institutions on submitting last year's or just sticking with this year's of what we know for now?
I can't answer that question yet, but I'll find out.
Okay, thank you. And so we are moving forward with our plan to reopen in August. We're hoping that everything is ready to rock and roll for employees to start returning to campus, probably late June, early July. The faculty are definitely going to need to be on campus so they can look at their classrooms and see what space may be open for them to expand out into for social distancing, to look for a larger space than maybe where they are, and to look at strategies for how the courses will be conducted. And so we do have a Plan B already in place for all classes to be online, online live and independent, if there's another outbreak and another executive order that we not return. And so I'm sure that everyone's ready for us to get back to, business is unusual, but get back to campus, definitely back to campus. And so our focus right now is just preparing to return. That's the focus. Any ideas, questions or concerns? Chair Cole?
My phone was, I couldn't get to my unmute. The, I appreciate that. Are there, and don't have any comments specifically, but if there's no other business?
All right.
All right, wonderful. Well, we appreciate it and we will see you back here on the Zoom platform on June 16th. So mark your calendars. I would ask the trustees, if you have a chance, to go online to the social media accounts and you can start seeing over the past week, the different divisions, departments and the celebrations for graduation. We'd love sharing those and commenting on those. And I know the students and the staff and administration appreciate seeing our input as well. So, yes, ma'am.
Just real quickly, you just reminded me. Everybody, please also go like the ISPs Facebook page. We're trying to grow that and it would be very helpful if you could each just like the page. It's super simple.
All right.
All right, with that, we will adjourn. Thank you all so much and thank you to Andrea and your team as well for, and PJ for keeping us on track with these virtual meetings. So thank you.
Thank you.